Podium mic check. Commissioner Howell, mic check. Commissioner Lopez, mic check. Commissioner Beatty, mic check.
Dennis, AKA Meitzner, mic check.
Commissioner Dennis, mic check. Justin Wagner, mic check. County Clerk, mic check. Tom Stoltz, mic check.
Well, hey, good morning. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission meeting. Excited for you to be joining us online, those joining us on Facebook and YouTube and our television partner KPTS. As we try to remind you every week, if you'd like to follow along with what we're doing here at the commission this morning, you could have walked in and got a meeting agenda packet. You can also access that, plus the supporting docs that we have as we look through, as we're making decisions on all these items. All those supporting docs are also available at sedgwickcounty.org. Got a pretty streamlined meeting. Today is going to be M A B C D day with a lot of adoptions of international building codes and such, so. Got a busy day. I would also like to make note that we do have a quorum here with four commissioners, but Commissioner Dennis is not able to join us this morning. But we do have a quorum and we'll be moving forward. So, that being said, I'll officially call the meeting to order for Wednesday, October 9th, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invocation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcement.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. Election season is upon us and the 2024 general election will be here before we know it. Tuesday, October 15th is the last day you can register to vote for the upcoming election. You can do this online, by mail, or in person at the Sedgwick County Election Office. Don't forget that if you have moved, changed your name, or want to switch your political party affiliation, you will need to update that in the same way, online, by mail, or in person at the election office by October 15th. If you aren't registered to vote, now is your time. Visit sedgwickcounty.org/elections to learn more. Just wanted to give a quick shout out real quick. Due to construction, the October 16th Board of County Commission regularly scheduled meeting will move from the lower level auditorium, which is this room, to the sixth floor conference room. The location change is because of work that's being taken or that's happening next week to remove the Alexander Calder Calder mobile arch from the atrium in the building. We will still broadcast live on KPTS and our YouTube and Facebook pages. And lastly, Sedgwick County offices will be closed to the public Monday, October 14th, for employee in service. Due to the noon deadline to file an affidavit for write-in candidacy, the election office will also be open until noon. Emergency services are available always by dialing or texting 911. And that's all I have for today.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Howell?
Just to be absolutely crystal clear, on the October 15th deadline for registration, this particular election coming up is a general election, so party affiliation or non-affiliation doesn't matter for this this election cycle for the November 5th election. I want to make sure people understand they don't need to worry about changing parties if they want to vote for a particular person, any candidate, you can vote for them regardless of your party. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, sir.
Very good. Other questions or comments? Nicole, as usual, great job. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
Okay, there was no one signing up for public agenda today. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting minutes of September 18th, 2024.
Okay, Commissioners, all, everyone was present for this meeting. Do we have any questions, comments, or suggested changes on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 18th, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business, item B, public hearing for the proposed adoption of the International Building Code 2024 edition.
The man of the hour, Chris Labram.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for letting us present these to you today. Chris Labram has stated M A B C D for the record. And the three items before you will all be public hearings for code adoptions. The first of those, the 2024 International Building Code with our local amendments. So presented, as stated also, not only for your review, but also for public hearing today. This is Article 2 of our Unified Building and Trade Code. This, as always, adopts an updated national code along with our local amendments. A full review of the code and updates to amendments as required included in that. This serves as the safety code for all new and remodel commercial building work in our industry. We'll also see a related code next with the existing building code that complements this. Designed, of course, to nest with the International Code Council codes that we use, and it is compatible with our one uniform code, which is plumbing. Coordinated across the other codes that we use, which includes bridging the gap of some adoptions that we have in place. So listed there as we generally do. And then also as we normally do, listing the impact and the usage of our codes across the county and our neighboring counties. So this obviously has a lot more of an impact than just unincorporated Sedgwick County and the city of Wichita. And this is also expanding, which we do feel is a good thing as it standardizes work across the community and tends to also then bring, that brings in all of the other partners and voices to that, helps us ensure that we've got a good look at our codes and our processes. The changes to this code are generally minimal. We will, of course, explain what we mean by that and what some of those are. The last adoption of this code was the 2018 version, and that was done in January of 2020. We had 91 amendments to that code. This adoption goes back to 121 amendments, which is, so we had Bennett about that, dropped down to 90, now we're back up. Normally, we'd like to see that going the other direction. Our code and the national codes matching up. What you see below that are a lot of the drivers for this. Americans with Disabilities Act references, some of those were increased in the code. We reference baseline ADA. So we amend those out for those purposes. It's not that we don't, don't, we actually have some more robust ADA requirements in some of ours. So a jurisdiction that, for example, did not have the resources that we do and would need to rely on this as a supplement to that would use those. We've seen a lot of increased reference to energy code. And we do not adopt the energy code here. We'll see that again later. And then we also have local floodplain regulations, so similar to ADA, we have a lot of amendments that simply reference that back to our local regulations versus those that are provided in the code. The process for this adoption follows a little bit differently than what you see with our trades codes in that the size, the robust nature of this, we actually begin with a stakeholder committee. The adoption committee formed staff members from our department, the two fire departments. Some interface with, from Public Works on that. Then we also have a, we had 10 or 12 industry professionals, contractors, architects, engineers who are on that committee. Initially do that review. That was then taken to the Board of Code Standards and Appeals. And again, those professionals reviewed that there, after which we presented it to the Wichita Area Builders Association Codes and Standards Committee and Industry Board, who also were in favor of the code. Unique also to our building code is the Office of the State Fire Marshal. Does have approval authority over the two chapters that mirror the International Fire Code. So there are two chapters there that overlap. That does affect our amendments in some areas. And this cycle, the Fire Marshal agreed to review our code in advance of this hearing. So we're very appreciative of that. And then obviously, we would report back any changes that are made, but at this point, we have their full approval for our amendment package. And then to get to some of those, so the vast majority, as discussed, of our, of those 121 amendments are just to increase the manageability of the code. We have a general section, the U B T C, that consolidates all of our fees, everything to do with contractor licensing and all of that across all of the codes. So in order to reference those, we see a lot of amendments and a lot of, again, just referencing administrative to ensure that those fit with all of our local regulations. And then, as stated, we did remove the energy code. Referred to the local and state regulations for floodplain, and we referred directly to the Americans with Disabilities Act for our ADA work. One that I did not include on the slide, but is also a few of our amendments in this code is sprinkler systems in garages. Based on some overseas events that occurred, and this being an international code, there are now some requirement stipulations that garages over four, even an open parking garage over four stories would require sprinklers. We and the engineering professionals we've consulted with do not feel that is effective, efficient, or required. So we have amended that out of our codes. One thing that we did change in this cycle is an increase, and it's a fairly large increase relatively speaking to the amount of work that can be done without a permit. We've previously said that you could work about 100, not about, 100 feet of wall area. That would be replacing sheet rock, wallboard, et cetera. When you do that, we, of course, want to make sure there's nothing in the wall that shouldn't be, or everything that is in the wall that should be is there. So we've allowed that. That would also include moving non-load-bearing walls to say, you know, rearrange a conference room or offices or something like that. Again, we've always had that at 100 feet, so after a review, we're going to increase that to, or requesting that we increase that to 250 feet. Just another example of work that where we don't require a permit would be a retaining wall less than 30 inches. The baseline code is going to say if you do a retaining wall, you should get a permit. We're only going to make you get a permit if it's a large enough retaining wall that we feel it warrants inspections. Some of the significance to this is state law in that for any commercial building, if we require a building permit by state law, there are also required architectural and/or engineering plans associated with that. So it is sometimes a somewhat significant cost increase when we go from not requiring a, requiring a permit to requiring that. So hopefully, that will be a help to the industry and support, especially in support of local businesses. Post-COVID, a lot of, we see a lot of differences in office layout, conference room capabilities, et cetera. So we hope that will support this, and we still think we're well in the, in the realm of safety there. Another example is three and four dwelling units. So we have a local amendment that allows a fire separation versus the use of sprinkler systems in those, where baseline code is going to, of course, kick you directly to a sprinkler system for anything above a two-family dwelling. And then again, we do, in our amendments, have some areas of enhanced ADA accommodations. Those apply to the city of Wichita, and they're based on City of Wichita's ADA rules. So I see Andrew's here, so hopefully, hopefully, Mr. Crane's got that. I got you, Andrew, right? We're looking out for you. Another amendment that we've generally highlighted is aircraft hangars, especially with the aviation industry that is supported here. We increase the size of a hangar that can be built without sprinklers, and then we also reduce spacing requirements in those hangars from the national code. Hotel and church canopies is another example of an amendment. The baseline code is going to say anything that's attached to your building has to have the same fire ratings as the building. So we, we do not see that it is required for your canopy, some of your overhangs, to meet those same, same level of requirements. We still ensure that they have a fire-resistant rating, but does not have to be to, to, to the same level as the building. And of course, a lot of that's going to be based on occupancy. One amendment that we have had in the code for a long time, but that is changing slightly for the city of Wichita is regarding restaurants. So a restaurant under, with 100 or fewer occupancy does not require sprinklers, period. Over that, the code would say, baseline code, national code, would say sprinklers are required. We've always allowed from 100 to 299 to be exempt from sprinklers in the county if they had a third exit and a manual fire alarm. The city previously had said with a third exit or a manual fire alarm. The city's fire amendment is going to match the counties now and say that that is a requirement for a third exit and a manual fire alarm. That is also a request to the State Fire Marshal. So we have mirrored that in our code. Obviously, if that changes with the, with the completion of the review and adoption of the fire code, we would readdress that with you all. But right now, we're looking at that as a change, so that is an increase in requirements. We do not see that impacting a lot of areas. There are a few in which you may have a situation with side walls. The Fire Marshal can still set the determination of the distance between those exits and those doors. So that still gives the fire department a fair amount to work with there in order to not be burdensome on the restaurants, but again, to still ensure safety. And then one that, that we also meant to be a little less restrictive than the basic code is the, our, what are called special inspections. These are in-process inspections. So we're often asked kind of how this goes. So here is a picture of the water treatment plant while it was in work. So our inspectors would show up before this concrete is in place and ensure that the holes are dug properly to the right depth for the footings and the foundation that's being poured, the right size of rebar, the right amount of rebar. So our inspections are pretty extensive prior to this concrete pour to ensure everything's in place. As the concrete's being poured, we are not inspecting that. An engineering firm hired by the contractor is, is keeping track of temperature, humidity, and sampling that concrete every so often to check for any voids or issues with the mix, anything like that. So that is all done, that's retained privately and done privately, and those reports are provided to us and filed as part of the permit. So what we do there is require, we do not require those inspection, those special inspections until we're into quite a large building, 50,000 square feet plus is, is when we first require those. At that point, you're getting a large enough building that those could have a structural impact if not done properly. And it is noted that some companies have special inspectors with their contractors and will do these regardless of the size of their building. So with that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you would have for us. And then, of course, being a public hearing, we would recommend opening it for the public comment. After which, staff recommendation will be that the B O C C close the public hearing and adopt the 2024 International Building Code and the local amendments as proposed.
Very good, Chris. Appreciate that. And also appreciate the reminder that this is a public hearing. So we will have public comment here shortly. Before we get into the public comment section, do any Commissioners have any questions or comments for Chris on the specific adoption? Okay, seeing none, what we'll do now is we'll officially open the public hearing and receive public comment. Is anyone from the public, would they like to provide comment on the proposed adoption of the International Building Code? Okay. Last call, anyone from the public on the International Building Code? Okay, seeing none, we'll officially close the public hearing, bring the discussion back to the bench. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the, the good briefing so far. I am curious on the issue you mentioned there on the restaurants. Does this, this does not apply to other businesses for that range of 100 to 299 occupants?
That is correct. So those, and there are fairly extensive occupancy tables and requirements within the code. Generally, retail, mercantile, those requirements are not as strict based on you don't have people seated in the restaurant, you have a lot more clear exiting, and just, and you're not cooking, you don't have those kind of things. So those are not as restrictive with sprinklers?
Is the state, so the State Fire Marshal essentially has, has he, he's made an opinion that he wants to see the, this to be an and versus an or. Is this, is this more restrictive than the code itself, or is this equal to the code?
That's a great question, Commissioner. It is actually still less restrictive than the code. It is just slightly more restrictive than our previous amendments.
Okay. Now, it's interesting that the roughly 91 amendments, those 91 amendments from previous code in 2020, are those largely carried forward. You said you made a few, a few changes, but how to, how to determine this count? There's 121 versus 91. Were those 91 generally brought forward from the previous code?
And that is correct. Yes. So we, we did, we basically carried over previous amendments that we've had. And then the additional ones that we saw come back on are, are based on references that were added to the code that we're amending out.
So one of my, I guess I have focused on the changes from 2020 to 2024, whatever this is today, 24. I'm not focused on the previous 91. I don't know if they are more restrictive than the code or or less restrictive than the code, and I feel like I'm not taking it, I've not had as much opportunity, opportunity to learn that part of this adoption today. Do you have any, any way to generalize what we, what those 91 amendments are?
The majority of those are going to be, again, referencing to our fee table and our fees, our administrative processes, ensuring that paragraph numbers and all of those are easily referenced within our code. And then, and then again, some of the examples that we gave, such as hangars, garages, by and large, those requirements are less restrictive than the code. I, I think we've hit, I'll see if Richard has anything specific to maybe add.
Richard, you can come on down if you want, bud. There you go. Calling on the experts.
So I would guess that the, so the building code went from the U F O building code in 1997 to the International Building Code, so. The 91, I mean, 97 is less restrictive than what is currently in the code.
Okay. I, I don't know if you guys have that captured in a table somewhere, where, how we, how we track that, but on this particular adoption, so we have 121 amendments, are they broken out, all 121 broken out, so they're in a table for us to see? They're not in my backup material, I don't think.
No, the only thing is I did that summary that you should have.
Summary is really hard to, sometimes it's hard to understand exactly what the amendment actually is because it doesn't give much detail, so.
Right. I mean, like Chris is saying, most of our amendments that we did the 2018 were carried over into 2024, carried over into 2016.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Richard.
All right.
And Richard makes an important, important part, point there, Commissioner, that a lot of these have been in place since that switch from uniform code to international code and local practices that were retained that would have been allowed by that previous code set.
So this entire code that we're adopting today will be in jurisdiction for Wichita and the unincorporated Sedgwick County and as well as a number of other city jurisdictions across our county. Can you, can you clarify which parts of Sedgwick County are not part of this?
So right now Derby is, is completely handling all of their inspections and all their code. Hayesville also does their own A C O P code adoption and all of their inspections. Bel Air, Valley Center, and Park City have a separate code adoption, but they also still use us for projects. So they, they are still affected by our code because they, they will still have some of their work done to our standards. And again, that is increasing. I was at the Bel Air City Council workshop last night to present the kind of differences between the codes, as their city council's looking at adopting our U B T C.
And other than the State Fire Marshal issuing an opinion on some, some of the things that he's already spoken to, we already talked about that today. There is no state-level code. There's, every county does this, or every jurisdiction has the right to do this. Including, again, a lot, I assume a lot of counties do it on behalf of their, their counties, and cities can do it again if they, if they don't want it to adopt. They can adopt whatever, whatever level of code they want as well. So everyone has the authority, I guess, to do it however they like.
That, that is my understanding, Commissioner.
So, okay. Just, I'll just say, one of the good, good things and bad things about Home Rule. Again, we have the right to make this what we want it to be, and that's, that's generally a good thing. It also creates incredible confusion. We have about 500, 500, more than 500 cities in this, in this state and 105 counties. And so you, if you think about how many different jurisdictions there are, how many variations many variations of of building code there can be in the state of Kansas, that is potentially very confusing. So I don't know what other jurisdictions are doing, but it is a, it's what we, it's how we handle this in Kansas. I think other states may do this differently. I'd be interested in looking and taking a look at, is there best practices in other states that would eliminate some of this confusion? That might be something for us to take a look at. I'll be I'll be working on that, I guess, to see if there's opportunity there or not. But generally speaking, I think you did a great job today, and I'll support the, I'll support the recommendation to adopt. Thank you.
Quick question, just a point of clarity, and I might be jumping ahead a little bit. We're talking about the International Building Code. These are new builds, new construction, correct?
Right. Now, this would also impact remodels, but as you will see, Chairman, in our next code, we have another code that assists us in addressing that.
I'm going to jump ahead real quickly, just with the clarifying question on the restaurants. The the 100 to 299, now the three, the third exit and the manual fire alarm, is that just new construction, or is that also going to be a?
That would also be if you're changing the use of a building to a restaurant.
Understood. Changing use.
So if it's an existing restaurant, you would you would not be impacted by this new amendment. If you if you convert a building to a restaurant at this point, you would still be affected by this.
Chris, well done on this presentation. I will move to approve the proposed adoption of the International Building Code 2024 edition.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item C, Public Hearing for the Proposed Adoption of the International Existing Building Code 2024 Edition.
Round two, Chris Labrum.
All right, I think I think I need to actually go back.
There comes Nicole.
So. Thank you again, Chairman Commissioners. And this, as as stated, will be the 2024 International Existing Building Code with amendments. So very similar, I'll go go a little faster on this one, as a lot of this you will see the same, a few few differences, but the same basic here. You'll notice on the fourth bullet there, this is the safety code for commercial remodel and renovation work. So that is the the only place that this code will apply. The nature of this code is that it is less restrictive than the overall International Building Code. So reduces code upgrades in an existing structure. This helps helps us in a lot of areas, whether it be a repair project or a renovation, especially if you're dealing with historical buildings and those sort of things. It gives leeway to accommodate newer code requirements with what is existing. And then, of course, is also in the I C C family of codes. So this one also coordinated across all of the codes that we are currently using and in the process of adopting. That it impacts, you do see it doesn't hit all of them, of course, as it's a fairly niche code. Also available for use across the jurisdictions, the main use of this is obviously going to be in Wichita and the or any bigger cities, because we see this hitting, especially in high rises, a lot of our bigger commercial buildings. This was also adopted in January of 20, at the same time as the I B C. At that time, it had 71 local amendments. Most of those are going to be very similar to amendments we see in the I B C, especially with the administrative piece. So this version takes us to 85 amendments. And even more so than the I B C is where we see energy code references and especially floodplain references in this code. They added a lot of that extra in this this code, which we don't need. So amending those out technically increases our number of amendments, but it's really not a change from anything that the industry is doing now. And again, we we have all of those to include the A D A that that are robust processes here locally. So this one also follows followed that process with that same stakeholder committee doing the review, followed by the Board of Code Standards and Appeals, followed by the Builders' Association. And though we send this code with the review to the state fire marshal, they they just use that for reference to our I B C, they they do not officially approve this code. Same as with our I B C, that the majority of the amendments are simply administrative to increase our manageability. And then, as stated, across those three areas where we saw, again, quite a bit of added reference in this year's, this edition of the code. So most of what we use this for is the remodel, renovation, repair of high rises. That's really where this code comes to bear, accommodates nonconformance in prior codes. So a lot of things we see with this is when you get into stairwells, so elevators, those kind of things. You've got an elevator shaft, that shaft is going to stay the same size, no matter what else you try to do with the building. So this code is going to accommodate putting a new elevator in an existing shaft, for example, and help help us know what can be allowed there. Stairwells, if, you know, again, a lot of times you're in a situation where structurally the stairwell could not be expanded in the building. So this this, again, will give options of what could be done in order to still meet exit widths or accept those exit widths where you don't have other options. So there are several tables and charts there to help analyze the or to help with the analysis and the repair of damaged structures. What we see in this code a lot is, basically, it's as if if someone is willing to add sprinklers to an existing building, then it will it will absolve them from most of the code upgrade requirements and pretty much let it stay at the state it was when it was built, if they're willing to install that sprinkler system. So that's always a decision for owners, designers, and contractors to make. Now, one that I do want to point out here that we amend that is even less restrictive than this code is it does call for a firewall. If you have set between electrical services, if you have separate electrical services, we just require a fire barrier. So we just require fire rating. Firewall is very extensive, requires it to usually be a little bit below ground to the deck of the building, those kind of things. So it's, that can be quite an added design and construction expense. But we remove that, we see that as a little, a little more than necessary. But other than that, again, with with this code, the changes that we are making and that we saw in the national code, with the exception of those references that we discussed, which are administrative, we see very little change. So really, very negligible in this code as to what will impact the local industry and the business community. And even the the that last amendment that I wanted to make sure we pointed out in the the last bullet there, that is an existing amendment. That's not something we added this cycle. That's that's been in place previously. So I will leave this one with that, unless you have further questions. Then again, same, we need to request public comment. It's officially part of the public hearing, and then it is recommended that the B O C C close that public hearing and adopt the 2024 International Existing Building Code and the local amendments as a proposed.
Okay, Chris, thank you. And before we get to public comment, any questions for Chris? I I do have one clarification, Chris. One of the questions I get a lot is when we're remodeling a space, and this was part of the amendment, you used to have to pull a permit if you were remodeling a space over, I think it was 200 to 250 square feet. That did change, there's an amendment here, if it was not a load-bearing wall being moved. Can you clarify that?
So and that that is in this code as well. So and I should have pointed that out, thank you, Chairman, that we do carry that between both codes, but that is exactly right. At 250 square feet, when you're for non-load-bearing walls and wall coverings, we are not requiring a permit. And that's, now, there is, there's a little bit that goes into that. It's not just that simple. If you have utilities in the wall, obviously, it's if it's load-bearing, those things, there there would be potentially other stipulations with that.
Certainly less restrictive.
But it is, it is that that amendment that you saw in the I B C going from 100 square feet to 250 also applies in this code.
Very good. Good. Very supportive of that. Okay, other questions for Chris at this point? Okay, seeing none, I will officially open the public hearing regarding the proposed adoption of the International Existing Building Code 2024 Edition. Public, we're able to receive public comment. Anybody would like to share? Okay. Second call, anybody for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll officially close the public hearing, bring the discussion back to the bench. Any questions for Chris? Okay, Commissioner Howell?
I just have one one question, I guess. Can you please explain the difference from a fire barrier versus a fire? What was the other word there it used?
Firewall.
Firewall.
So a firewall is much more extensive in the amount of coverage that's required, what is required to be in there as far as a fire rating. So generally, a firewall is going to be required to extend all the way to the deck, all the way to the to the roof decking, and at least to, if not into, the ground.
Oh, really?
So, and the requirements for construction of those are pretty extensive as compared to a fire barrier, in which case we would still require the proper type of wall, and you would have a fire rating associated with that, with your wallboard, your sheet rock, those types of things.
And the ceiling of penetrations and all that has to.
Yes, and and you would, so I'm going to have to look to Richard with this. Would you be allowed penetrations that are, as long as they're sealed in a fire barrier?
The biggest thing between a firewall and a fire barrier is a firewall has to be structurally independent. So if a fire catches on one side of a building, the firewall has to stay. In a fire barrier, you don't have to have the structural independence.
So what this code does, it allows a fire barrier standard versus a firewall standard?
Right. So a fire barrier is actually less restrictive and.
I see that. Is this for commercial and residential? Or is this just commercial only?
Yeah. This is only when you have two different services. If they want to, because electrical, national electrical code requires you to run one service to a building, and then this would allow you to run two different services to a building. Or if you did three, you know, if you divided the building up into three different fire barriers, you could add three different electrical services to it.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, good. Any other questions? Thank you, Richard. I said, thank you. All good. Okay, I will move to adopt the resolution of the International Existing Building Code 2024 Edition.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Very good. Next item, please.
Item D, Public Hearing for the Proposed Adoption of the International Mechanical Code 2024 Edition.
Number three, Chris Labrum.
All right, thank you, Chairman Commissioners, the last one. And back to trades codes with this one. So as stated, 2024 Mechanical Code, Article Five of our U B T C, also adopting the code and local amendments, and this is our safety code standards, basically basically for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems. So there are some other components that go with this, but that is the, that's the main gist of the code. It is an I C C code, and when I say other things that go with this, one of those is the International Fuel Gas Code. So we adopt the I F G C generally through the mechanical, we have some components of that in plumbing as well, so it's kind of split between the two codes. But but some pieces of this or several pieces of this impact that. And then the International Residential Code, the way it is designed also has a lot of the mechanical code and the residential code, of course, mirror each other. So again, as with the others, coordinated across the codes that we currently have in place and or are in the process of adopting. The latest adoption of this code was in December of 2021, and that was the 21 version that had nine amendments. We are now going to the 24 and proposing eight amendments. We did of this, as you can see there, six of those eight. The only thing we changed was updates to numbering and references. So while those are amendments, they are amendments that have been in our code for several cycles now and will not be a change. Also, those are generally less restrictive. So what we have in those, we allow a little bit of ducting, we allow some longer ventilation when it comes to dryers and appliances and some of that, then the baseline code, that's where most of those impact. And then the other two sections of those, the only thing we changed this cycle was to update our 21 to 24 references. We did delete one section, and we have required a grease duct test previously, that is now required in the national code. So we removed our amendment, and again, national code now mirrors what we have been doing for some time here. So no new amendments or new or and no new items were added to the U B T C. To reemphasize the impact of the code, same as you saw on the other slides, this code did standard, did follow, as our trades codes generally do, the process of having the board review the code. So our mechanical, Board of Mechanical Appeals reviewed this. Industry associations then also assisted and reviewed their work. That would include the Kansas Cooling Contractors Association, the local sheet metals worker union, workers' union, and the Wichita Area Builders Association. To get right into some of the amendments that we have there, this was a change in noting, these are all changes we're going to highlight that occurred within the national code. So these are not amendments that we have, these are just changes that we saw to the code, and we do feel that that these are generally in favor of the industry. So with the occupancy of buildings, previously, the code separated the tables, a bigger building had different, slightly different ventilation standards, but they have combined all of those into one requirement for ventilation rates. So that will make it a little easier to follow, and it also slightly lessens those restrictions on build bigger buildings. Another thing that is seen and noting that these are all based on national engineering standards, the National Society of Engineers. So a lot of of different items that we now see in buildings, such as adult changing, changing stations. Now, really, what this amendment is going to tell you is that if you do something like this, you've got to treat it like a restroom. So this, these are just expanding the definitions in the code to ensure that everything that should be in that definition is being incorporated in that, because we're seeing new uses being put in buildings. So we don't want to get in a situation where in the design, or especially past design, someone would not realize that their ventilation has to account for all of these. So we, there is a provision that prohibits connecting the discharge from exhaust fans that serve dwellings and sleeping units to a common duct. So previously, and and years ago, you would have the the situation where if you had separate, just that separate dwellings and apartment building and that, that you could not run all of that through a common duct. The code has and continues to allow and actually even increased this allowance with this recent code, saying that if you've got negative pressure in that common duct, you can now actually run those through a common duct. So again, slightly lessens the restriction that that was there previously. This is also one that lessens restrictions, and we think the way it is applied will be helpful, so generally, or previously not allowed to use return air from a closet. So there will be a lot of situations where a closet will still not, you know, make that really feasible. But as long as it meets the standards for pulling return air from the closet, then you are able to do so. So the closet you see pictured here is probably not one that we see very often, but is going to be the type of closet that would facilitate that, a very large one associated with the with master bedrooms and those sort of things. But again, that will help there. And as Stony pointed out when reviewing things, one of the things he likes about this is sometimes you see issues with humidity and and those sort of things in closets that this may, this may actually help with. And then also an increase in the code, this is something that we have generally allowed locally, but again, now we've seen in national code, if we're talking radiant tubing and those type of applications, heat, heating ducts and those or heating cables. So the table allows for very slight variations on site, noting that it is nearly impossible to calculate those exactly in the design. So if there's up to a 10% increase or change on site with those. So if there's up to a 10% increase or change on site with those, we can now just approve that in the field without having to require that to be updated on the as-built plans. So again, that, that is a, a good thing to assist inspectors and the industry and just make that easier, to make that adjustment without then either foregoing a piece of paperwork to make it official or requiring that either way. So we're happy to see that in the code. So again, not based on the very minimal change to this one, that's, that was all we had to highlight, wanted to highlight specifically for the day. So same drill, we'll happily take any questions, recommend opening the public hearing and then closing that to adopt the 2024 International Mechanical Code and the local amendments as proposed.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Chris. Before we open up for public comment, any questions or comments for Chris Labram? Okay, seeing none at this time, we'll officially open the public hearing and invite comment from the public. Would anybody like to speak from the public? Okay, one person? Sir, if you can just give us your name and your address for the record, we'll give you five minutes.
Andrew Crane, Guiding Pause ICT. One of the things to, you know, keep in mind, and under the ADA Act, including apartments need to be ADA accessible. That ends, including folks in wheelchairs, that closets need to be big enough to roll around in, and including bathrooms, too.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate that. Any other public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll officially close the public hearing, bring the discussion back to the bench. Anything left for Chris? Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, and this may be a question for really all three of these, but I'll just ask about this code, but you can respond however is appropriate. The implementation of this, I understand you have to publish this in the newspaper, I guess, for record, but in terms of the practical, the practical implementation of this being rolled out for these three codes to our installers and the, the industry that does these things, how, how does that, how, how does that get transitioned from current code to future requirements being expected by these contractors?
And that's a good question, Commissioner. So the required, the implementation date will be one January, specifically for the building codes, once published, and so the mechanical code will be effective as soon as it's published, but you will have that zone between now and January that, depending on the state of a project, depending on what is in, and we do that because we feel using the 2024 code may be in the interest of the business. So that will be allowed, and then, but not necessarily required in that zone. And then any projects that are, have begun or that do begin while we're still under the 2018 version of the codes will be allowed to continue that and work that. So we, we've already published in our newsletter that goes out to the community, the status of these codes, the adoption dates and all of that. With these, especially the building codes, we will have some training sessions, we will offer courses, we will invite at some point, as soon as we're able to line that up, we are lucky to have here in Wichita, two of the individuals who assist in creation of the codes for the ICC in the local area, so we will invite them and/or other ICC instructors to present a course for our designers and for our contractors on the changes between the last version that we were in and the version that we're in now. So there will be, there will be quite a bit of communication within the community to make these, these changes and get them in place.
And it goes without saying, I guess, just to, just to confirm, but these other, these other codes like the NEC or the, or the UPC Plumbing Code or Electrical Code, those are, those have their own implementation dates. We, we do those independently, even though they're referenced here, those have their own cycles and their own processes, is that correct?
That is correct. We, we try to line them up, so generally those, those that we have presented to you so far are that same, exactly as I described, the same cycle that they are authorized for use, but the implementate, the official implementation date is one January, with the exception of our elevator code, which we specifically requested that to be effective upon publication in order to ensure we were meeting state standards.
I know it's nearly 2025, but in the past, it seems like we, we have usually been a couple of years behind the national rollout of these updated national codes. This time, it seems like we're really kind of aggressively going after that, trying to catch up, if you will, with, with the national, national codes. Can you, is there some reason why that's happening?
And that, that is again, a good point. That's always a discussion as to whether we should delay that a little bit and kind of see what has happened with the, with the codes. A few things there is the review cycle has gotten more robust, and we've gotten more involved in that over the last decade, if you will. So for example, the committees that are beginning to create the 27 version of the code are forming as we speak. So what we're seeing is, is we feel that, and the way codes have gone, we feel that by adopting them early, we're allowing the industry to take advantage of technology and take advantage of changes in the code. We do realize that that sometimes has the effect of things that are more restrictive coming on earlier. We, of course, have the option to amend those and to evaluate those. So it is, it is a, it is always a philosophical discussion with us as to where we should fall there. The recommendations from our chiefs, from our boards, at this point have been that they feel we're in a better place and better serving the industry to go ahead and adopt the codes. As, as you said, they, they've been on, so they were released about this time last year, maybe a little earlier. So, so these codes have been on the street for a year now and have been in review by us for that entire time.
Okay, so with the adoption of this code today, or this, this final one, it seems like we've kind of, this is kind of the end of the entire cycle for all of the codes.
We, we have the plumbing code remaining.
We do.
And then, and then you, then we'll be finished.
Okay, then we'll start the process over again.
Correct.
Just a, this is just me talking as an independent commissioner here, but I would like to just, I guess, question the, the process on a, on a level. I'm not, I do think they did a great job, and I'm generally supportive of everything that's been presented here today. Well, my only, my, I guess my concern is, you know, I look at regulations as being, they should be based on, on life and safety, what's necessary for life and safety, and some of these codes, I think, go a little bit beyond that, and to that extent, some regulations potentially, they, they add cost to the, to the, to the construction or the, you know, remodeling costs of what, of a building perhaps, because we're trying to meet those regulations. And with that, with that in mind, I would like to just ensure that we have some taxpayers on these boards to look at, if you will, maybe not from a, not, not a, a trade provider, not a contractor, not a, not a builder, but simply have someone have a perspective of a, of a user, if you will, that says that I, I want to be cautious not to allow, you know, regulations that are basically maybe, maybe for someone who's in the industry, they see a value there, but maybe from the taxpayer perspective or a user perspective, we'd like to have some, some different, a different voice at the table. I don't think we've actually done that before now, and I think I, we ought to take a look at that. So once we get through this plumbing code adoption, I would like to maybe have a conversation about potentially amending the makeup of these review committees to make sure that we have some taxpayers or some users on these boards, simply to represent, if you will, who's impacted by paying for these regulations and, and whether or not they see value in, in the regulations from a user's perspective that may be on a little bit health and safety. So that's maybe another conversation for another day, but I do, it is a worthy discussion that we need to probably, I think, take a look at how these boards are formulated to make sure we have another voice at the table, if that makes sense. Thank you so much.
Okay, very good. Okay, any other questions or comments for Chris? Seeing none, I'll move to adopt the resolution for the International Mechanical Code 2024 Edition.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howe.
Hi.
Commissioner Lopez.
Hi.
Chairman Beatty.
Hi.
Chris, thank you and the team and all those who were involved in all three of these today. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on October 3, 2024.
Okay, just one item. There's Joe.
And I'm not used to being here so early, so a lot of surprises today. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Joe Thomas, Pertching Director. This is the result of the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on October 3, and this one item is a change order number three for trash collection services for various departments. The recommendation is to accept the modification pricing for waste connections of Kansas for an additional 4% overall increase. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Lots of, in the meeting notes, in the minutes, there's a lot of clarity in some of these things, so I appreciate that being published. Questions? Commissioner Howe?
Um, just a quick question. This is a, this is the final year of a, of a contract we have with them, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is this, is this one of the extension, extension years, and we have like a three year plus two? That's like the fifth year?
Yes, we had two years plus three, one year.
Two plus three, okay. And the last time this went out to bid again was, then with that in mind, then most, around five years ago.
Right.
Do we have the option of just ending this contract at this point and going back out to bid?
Yes, we have, that's what that option to renew allows us to do. We can decide to not renew the contract and go out for competitive solicitation.
Well, I, I don't want to tell you the whole story as to why I'm, I'm asking this, but I have a little bit of experience with, I mean, let me ask, so obviously, there's a couple of really big haulers out there that I think that are in very good competition with each other. There's some smaller, some, some smaller haulers in the area that are competing very, very well, and at least on the commercial side, have come in extremely low. This contract today, the total value of this contract, go back to where this is, but the, the contract value is, you have that number, that's fine, and the increase is what we're talking about here. So I'd like to, I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me, let me get there real quick. So the, this is a total increase of 16%.
Yes.
This is a 4% this year, is that right?
Yes, sir. It was originally, the contract was firm, well, the pricing was firm for two years. So we had a, no price increases for the first two years of the contract. The third year, the request was made for a 7%, which was a negotiated increase. When we looked at the Consumer Price Index for trash services, cumulatively by that third year, it should have been 14%, and we were at seven. Then the next year, 23 to 24, they requested we negotiate a 5%, which made it 12. At that time, it was 18 cumulative, so we were still about 6% under, and this year they're asking for a 4%.
And just, how many, I know there's, some of these facilities, they have two or even more pickups per week, but most of these are weekly.
Yes, sir.
And it sounds like we don't participate in recycling, which is again surprising to me, that we don't have recycling options here. But with that in mind, if you add up how many pickups per week total, it'd be nice to know, how many pickups are we paying for, for the total? Cost for 2023 was $240,000. And I guess, is this, is this a 2024 pricing we're, we're talking about today?
What we have on the table is the original price that the contract was, and then you figured in the notes, the percentage of increase from those, that original price table.
So this last year of the contract, what's the total expenditure for this last year?
We don't have, I don't have that figure, I can get it to you for, to date.
But it's gonna be more than $240,000, obviously.
It could end up, yes, more than that.
And I guess I would like to say, how many pickups per, for total, for the year, are we, are we getting for 240, or say, 250, I'll just round it off, about a quarter million dollars? That is a lot of money for, for this particular service, I think, and I, and maybe I'm off, but I, I think going out to bid might be a better option here. I don't know, I guess, I know this is through bid board here, I, I'm not sure that I'm ready to adopt this increase without, I guess, did, did anybody, did anybody, I guess, explore, I don't, I'm not sure you're even allowed to do that, but do we have an awareness where other haulers would charge, any idea, do we have an awareness of what that, they would charge if this was something that went back out to bid?
Not unless we go out to bid to get the exact numbers. So when we looked again at this increase that could have been allowed or was allowable through the CPI, we felt that this was a very competitive or allowable increase without us having to go back out for bid and then picking up all the containers, and then, of course, that pricing, we felt, would have probably been even a little bit more than what we've been allowing.
All right. Joe, just technical question, if we go, if we go back out for bid, do we have to forfeit the current contract that we are, you have to live in one of the two worlds, right? That's the other potential risk.
Do you remember how many, how many bids we had for this originally?
Originally, when, back in 2020, Waste Management did not get their bid in, in time. We, all we had was waste connections, but we...
So we solicited for more than one, maybe two or three, or however many there were, but we actually only had, only had one valid bid at that, at that time?
Right.
That may be another, another factor here.
Yes, and then what we do, we look at the previous contract, kind of get an idea whether it was...
And do you know, do you know whether this last, have we had the same hauler for a long period of time?
Was, was the last one, was it still waste connections?
Yeah, we've had them for quite a few years. One time we did have waste management at one point, didn't we? Long, way before, okay. We're pretty sure, it's been, basically it's been waste connections has been our ongoing supplier.
So next year, when this is over, we're gonna go out to bid regardless?
Yes, yes, sir, because there are no, no more allowable options to renew.
I, I guess I just say, say, I don't know that the bid, the initial bid process was a perfect story, if you will. I, I think, based on my experience and what I'm seeing in the private sector from commercial pricing, I, I think there may be some better options here. I'd like to encourage us to not, not adopt this, but maybe go out to bid this year. Thank you.
Joe, we're going out to bid early summer? Is that what it looks like?
Yes, yes, and it would probably be around June, end of June, July of 2025.
Can you clarify what the manager just asked, was when we go out to bid, does that ce, that ce, just going out to bid ceases, or?
No, we're, this is the last year of this contract. So regardless, we have to go out for bid.
Okay.
Joe has mentioned. My question was, if we go the direction what Commissioner Howe's recommending, and we go out for bid now, we have to forfeit the current final year of the contract. And that, to me, is a little bit bold, because if we go back out for bid, it's possible it could come back higher, even from the current vendor that we have.
Well...
So...
It's kind of a gamble.
Okay. Okay, other questions? Commissioner Howe?
Just, just again, a comment, I, I may be way off, but if we open this up to everybody who's a hauler in the, in the community, again, I, you're right, I think this is a, a gamble if you want to look at it that way, but I, I think that they'll still compete. I mean, if they all come in higher, then we potentially have an antitrust situation. We want to make sure that we have, you know, a pure bid competition process here. In my experience in the private sector, looking at some commercial opportunities here, I have seen incredible competition. So I, I don't know that it's gonna hurt us to go out to bid this year versus next year.
And when we went out, pardon me, when we went out in 2020, there were a list of bidders that said, it's too big for us, we don't want to bid it. We had like, I think it was six. I don't have the names in front of me, I looked at the table earlier, but there were six that responded, we did not, we aren't able to provide you a pricing. And part of the reason was the size, pardon me, size and frequency for the county and the size and scale of their operation.
So Joe, we're up 16% over the life of this contract here.
Yes, sir.
This will be a, the third increase, this is 4%.
Right.
Who knows where this thing's gonna be next year, based on a lot of factors, rates, fuel.
Exactly.
Labor, a lot of these things, we could end up in a worse situation or a better, I mean, flip a coin at this point, depending on a lot of different factors. What do you recommend? Do we...
I, I recommend going ahead and finishing this last year contract with this 4% increase. And, and what I'll do is, when we do the new bid, we'll look at the pricing we get at that time and compare with the ending price for the old contract, and I'll provide you those figures, kind of give you an idea of what the increase will be on the new contract. But my recommendation is to finish this. We're already, we've been able to hold the pricing firm for two, or the vendor held the pricing firm for two years, and each of their increases have been under the Consumer Price Index for Trash Collection Services, which we feel is very competitive.
Okay, that's helpful. Okay, we're going to bid before long, though, that's for sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, Commissioners, I'll move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on October 3, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howe.
No. No.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Thank you.
Joe, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Okay, Commissioners, any, oh, nope, Tom Stoltz, sir.
All right, Chairman, good morning. And Commissioners, Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items F through K on the agenda this morning.
There you go. Thank you, sir. Commissioners, we've had some conversations about the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Howell?
I don't want to do, I don't want to pull this off the agenda. I just have one question on the on the pay changes for Public Works. There was one position that actually has a decrease in pay, and it's fairly significant. I'm just curious, if you have a good explanation as to why we'd have a decrease in pay for one out of all those employees?
Commissioner, point of clarity, is this for the Public Works? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have that position in front of me. Which position is that?
So it's on the last page of the four pages. It's an intensive supervision officer, one, it's being promoted, the title change is going to be administrative support, I'm sorry, administrative supervisor, two. It's going to go from 53, 310 per year to 46, 090 per year. It's a reduction of $8,633 per year. And if you look at the other ones, the other positions that are similar to that.
Did you say Public Works or Public Safety?
I apologize, Public Safety. I was wrong. Yeah, I was off memory when I made the question. I apologize. It's Public Safety. I apologize.
Is this the?
And to clarify, I'm in favor of the consent agenda entirely. I just think this is a curious question here. We need to understand what we're doing here.
I can give you the exact. Take a shot.
Morning, Commissioners. Rusty Leeds, Assistant County Manager. I'm not specifically in the loop on this one. I think this probably went through Human Resources for approval. But you're taking an intensive supervising officer, an ISO, who is supervising clients who have convictions, and you're reducing that position to an administrative support position, who is not supervising clients or doing corrections officer work. So it's going from a corrections officer to a office support position. And that's why it is a reduction in cost, because the office support position is a lower paid position than a corrections or ISO officer.
It'd be my assumption, this is an unfilled position.
I'm sorry?
I would make I would make the assumption this is an unfilled position.
Correct.
So there's not someone actually losing salary.
Correct. And I'm unsure. I'm unsure whether this is a GF position or a grant position, but this is an unfilled position that they're reclassing down so that they have additional office administrative support that they apparently need. But I'm not, I don't have the details. I can get those for you.
You know, this obviously is is described very well here. It just left a question for me, if there actually is a person that's getting a reduction in salary, I would be concerned about that. I trust that's not what's going on here.
That is not the case.
If that's if that's not the situation, then I think we're fine. Thank you.
Okay. Yep.
Okay, thank you, Rusty. Appreciate that. Okay, I'll move to approve consent agenda items F through K.
Second.
Motion of second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Okay, Commissioners, any committee reports you'd like to share with the public? Seeing none, next item, please.
Other.
Okay, anything other, under other?
Every week.
Over.
Over/under.
The over/under. Okay. Seeing none, next item.
Executive session.
Okay, we do have an executive session today. Commissioner Lopez.
All right, I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 20 minutes until 10:31 for consultation with legal counsel for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss legal claims against Central County.
Okay.
And that the Board of County Commissioners reset, return to this room from executive session at 10:31.
Okay, very good. We have a motion for executive session. I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, we will return shortly. Thank you.[922.54]